All right, I indeed see that it is 4:30 and I will officially call this special board meeting of June 6, 2019 to order. Appreciate everyone being here tonight in Loxley at 4:30. Ms. Ms. Lindsay is out of town, so she contacted us, she's going to be here, but we did have a full quorum. I'm gonna call on Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, would you have our opening prayer?
I'm gracious, Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for this time when we could be together. We appreciate the rain, it was dry there for a long time, so thank you for the rain. We pray as we always do, Lord, that you'll give us wisdom to know the right things to do and that you'll give us the courage to do them. We love you and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
You wish them for the pledge of allegiance and remember this is D-Day, the 75th anniversary of that, and if you've not been to the World War II museum in New Orleans, I challenge you, you ought to go. It'll change you to see the young men on those boats and what that's about. So with that salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, Mr. Willhite, letters of commendation. I feel like they're coming on. We're excited about that.
It's always a pleasure to announce our letters of commendation on behalf of our superintendent and our Board of Education. The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Javis Atkinson, Baldwin County High School, and award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter relay state champions presented this sixth day of June 2019. Player Atkinson, come on down. Coach, you can come on down too, Coach McDaniel.
That's what a 4x100.
That's right.
Relay state champion.
Big stuff. This letter of commendation reads, "The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Latrell Holloway, Baldwin County High School, and award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter relay state champions presented this sixth day of June." The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Taquillan Mims, Baldwin County High School, and award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter Ty Quillen, cool, what a cool name. Letter of commendation, "The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Taquan Williams, Baldwin County High School, award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter relay state champions." The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Coach Graylin Hodge, Baldwin County High School, and award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter relay state champions. Great job, Coach. The Baldwin County Board of Education is pleased to recognize Coach DeMarcus Mosley, Baldwin County High School, and award this letter of commendation for the 2019 6A 4x100 meter relay state champions. Let's give them all another round of applause. We get our representative board member, Mr. Johnson, here. And we will grab a camera, and we already grabbed one camera here, you're in the Twitterverse, and our superintendent would like to say a few words.
Right before they snap the picture right there. Of course, I was kidding around with the guys, you know, and anchor, a tall one right there, you know, he anchored the 4x100. Of course, when I came over to talk to him, I said, you know, I still think I can probably get down to a stance. Of course, one of them said, don't hurt yourself now. And then, you know, I tell you, but what a feat this is. I mean, these young men have no facilities really to run on, but that's kind of commonplace at a lot of our schools. You know, their track is big in Baldwin County, but it's been a secret for years. But they practice, I guess you practice in your parking lot, practice on the football field, running up and down the football field. But I asked the anchor guy too, I said, he finished third in the 100. I said, third? I said, what'd you finish third for? He said, man, that dude was fast. So, but I tell you, this is, it's a joy to see this, recognizing all of our athletes and we want to do what we can as a school system to support them and all of our schools with resources and facilities and hopefully we're putting together some good plans that maybe you board will appreciate how we can help our schools, so.
I have just learned that Coach Myrick here actually coached some of the daddies of these fine young men. So I said, you know, that's a little history that they're dating Coach Myrick a little Good shot. Good shot. He used to carry. He was fast.
He was fast. That's him.
I tell you, several of them can tote a football too, that's another thing about the rest of the county. Thank you, fellas, thank you so much, appreciate that. All right, before we get into the amendments of the agenda, you want to call on Mr. Gray to give us an update?
Yeah, Board, I gave y'all a little bit of a heads up that, you know, session's just over and I really applaud Ms. Colley, she does a great job of giving y'all briefings on a lot of things. She spent some good time up there in the legislature. I would go when I can and communicate with our politicians, but John has, he just wants to kind of give y'all a few little thoughts on some of the passages of some things, and John, if you want to, just real quick.
A couple of things to talk about, we had two bills come in for the legislature this session that were put up by Senator Elliott. Senator Elliott put up two bills for us that we had talked about a while back. One of them, you will remember, was a negotiated point of our settlement with Gulf Shores, with as far as the city school splits. There were two proponents to that bill, two issues that we were dealing with. One, we felt very strongly that in light of Gulf Shores forming a city school system with no vote, that was the first time that had happened in Baldwin County, it was the first time that an attempt had been made to even split with no vote. The Island School System in Seven had attempted but had a vote, and Orange Beach in their two previous attempts had voted. This was unusual in the sense that Gulf Shores chose to do it without a vote, perfectly allowable under the law, no reason that they couldn't have done it that way. But we felt like in light of the way it had been handled, that we should give the voters of Baldwin County the opportunity to speak on it. The legislative delegation disagreed, there were mayors that were in disagreement of that, they thought that it was taking away some authority of the cities and the councils to do their business and split away. But the second provision of that bill, which I will tell you was infinitely more important, stayed and the legislature passed it, and that is, in Baldwin County, a few years back, John Wilson and I created, as you know, the Pay As You Go program. And our Pay As You Go program does not carry any long-term debt. As y'all will remember from the Gulf Shore split, when a city system splits away, they do not pay you for assets, they simply accrue the debt that is left on whatever assets there are. Well, in our current configuration of Pay As You Go, there is no debt. The debt that we have with regions is essentially a cash flow loan. When we're done with the program, we pay it off or we retire it, and those assets are debt-free. So technically, a city school system that wanted to form could walk out the door with a brand-new high school, or a brand-new middle school, or $40 million worth of elementary schools, which would be completely infeasible, it would be inequitable to the rest of the county, it would be difficult to ask the other portions of the county to recuperate that. Gardendale in Jefferson County, similar situation. Gardendale ended up with a $60 million school that was paid through some grant funding. When Gardendale wanted to split away from Jefferson County, the bone of contention was that they were going to get a $60 million five-year-old high school for free. But Jefferson County was going to have to replace that school, and they had no money. So they wanted Gardendale to pay something for it, and Gardendale said, we're not paying you anything because the law says you have no debt, we owe you nothing. So what we've done is we've attached to that bill a new provision that those facilities paid for with cash or for which there is no debt accrued to them, they will end up working off of an amortization schedule, similar to your house, similar to a depreciation schedule with the federal government. We have one that's already published, we publish it every year to the State Department of Education, when we fill out our forms on our buildings and our assets, we have a valuation that's audited, the auditors apply the valuation to it, and then they add depreciation to it. So we already have a fixed number that everybody agreed with. The bottom line is, as we move forward in this new world, both in the hundreds of millions of dollars we will be spending in Pay As You Go money over the next decade, as well as the thought that everybody can run a school system better than we can, we want them to know that they're not going to get anything for free. More importantly, I think we need to make sure that the rest of the taxpayers in Baldwin County know that that's a protection. We did an interview today with somebody who's doing a story in depth about the growth in Baldwin County, and one of the things that we shared with them that I don't think gets enough attention is how much money the Pay As You Go program is saving, and I want to take a minute to highlight that. We talk a lot about how much construction work we're getting done, and the purpose of the Pay As You Go program when we rolled it out was instead of taking that $15 million a year that we were pulling back and doing a little bit here and a Band-Aid here, let's put it all together and make it 60 million. Well, as you guys know, it has grown to be almost 100 million, and that is a result of economic growth in the county. When we can, let's do. But what it has also provided is the ability to save $78 million. And we actually ran the numbers today, had we have gone to the bank or gone to the bond market and bonded out that $100 million in construction over 30 years, we would have paid $79 million in interest. That's $79 million we're not paying to anybody. That's money that stays right here in Baldwin County. So if, and our plan is to do this three times, we would do 60 and 60 and 100. So if you take roughly 200, $240 million in potential Pay As You Go program work in the future, we're saving Baldwin County taxpayers $300 million in interest payments that we're not giving away to, as some of my folks, friends in the Tea Party community like to say, those hedge fund folks up in New York. We're not giving that money away. That's money that's staying here. So I don't think we talk enough about that, I think as a board, when you're out talking to people, I think you need to share with them that the Pay As You Go program did two things. One, it helped us jump in front of growth, it allowed us to immediately inject capital into the fastest-growing county in, probably east of the Mississippi, certainly in the state of Alabama. But number two, what it's saving us in interest payments is incredible, and there's not enough spoken about that. The second bill that we had up is what we lovingly refer to as the developer bill. Shockingly enough, I think we all anticipated that the developers would be in great opposition to the bill. There was really only one developer that was in opposition to it, that was D.R. Horton. One of our friends, former county commissioner Tucker Dorsey, led the opposition to that effort. He was not in favor of the bill for, he argued a philosophical reason. I think though, by the time we were done, the other developers in Baldwin County were on board. Ms. Norman participated with us at a negotiation at the Board of Realtors. I don't know if you are aware, but I will confirm to you that not only did the Realtors and developers support our bill, they endorsed our bill, not just the locals, but the state organization endorsed it as well. We expected it to be adopted, we made some revisions and changes which were recommended by the State Association, they were actually great changes, it was a much better bill when they got done with it. But then the mayors from Baldwin County came on board unanimously and decided to oppose the developer bill. The explanations for why they oppose it are varied across the board. We heard from one mayor through a reporter today that he opposed it because the 30 days that they were allowed to get a response from us would run simultaneously to the 30 days in which they're required under the law to process the planning approval for a subdivision. So if we waited 30 days to get them a response, then by law, they could default and get the subdivision awarded without opposition. Well, I wish that mayor would have called, because what he would have realized is, is that they didn't file their packet until they got the letter from us, because the letter from us went with the packet to the planning commission. And of course, a lot of what we heard was that communication is horrible, and we're just awfully bad people. The problem is, communication works both ways. You know, Mike McMillan is in this room, and I frequently call Mike, Mike calls me. And I wish all mayors worked the same way that Mike did, and Mike was not one of the ones complaining about communications, at least as I know. And I don't think he would be. But there were clearly some mayors that felt like they were left out of the loop. Mr. Tyler can speak to that later, but he had communications with most, if not all of the mayors within weeks approaching that bill, and no one asked him about the developer bill. There were comments about the city vote bill, but he had no concerns and heard from no one about the developer bill. The bottom line is, it ended up dying. The mayors in Baldwin County opposed it unanimously, they authored a resolution, which I believe has been distributed to everyone, and everyone has read it and has a copy of it. Some mayors have communicated back to us saying that they were confused, that they thought they were opposing the police jurisdiction bill, that they in fact did not realize that it was that bill, but that they were not going to go out on a limb and change their opinions of it. I would not say that bill is completely dead. The legislative delegation understands our concerns. Fox 10 will have an in-depth investigative report, some of the other stations are doing this as well, where we very clearly illustrate to them the problems. And I'll wrap it up by using the example we used today, which is at Bell Forest Elementary. In the first Pay As You Go program, we had always designated an eastern shore elementary school. In the current plan we're working on for the next 2021 PEGO, there's probably maybe two to three more elementary schools coming. But here's what happens. We ended up in 2017 putting an expansion on at Daphne East. The week after that ribbon-cutting, or groundbreaking if you will, the Daphne Planning Commission took up Jubilee Farms, which was a 900-home subdivision. And it was infuriating to a lot of the leadership here, because had we have known about it literally a week before, we would have put off that groundbreaking, and we would have talked about moving that money into building a new school instead of building an expansion. So comes Jubilee Farms, which is going to bring in 900 homes, and some of the reconfiguration to Offlow, Rockwell, we end up building Bell Forest. Bell Forest is going to hold 1,200 children. We, between Jubilee Farms and 900 homes, between what we pulled out of Fairhope to create capacity on the south end, and what we pulled out of Spanish Fort to create capacity at the north end, we're booking in Bell Forest at around 750 kids. That gives us a little less than 500 growth room going forward. Since we have announced Bell Forest, there has not been one, two, but three, 400 home subdivisions that we knew nothing about. One of them, I'll back up, one of them we knew a lot about, and we have known a lot about for a long time. And that's Trudland Homes has been a great partner to us, I cannot say enough about their ownership and their leadership, they are amazing. They have literally donated millions of dollars worth of land, they meet with us quarterly, they share data with us. But it's frustrating when you go out and build this capacity, the apartment complex at 13 and 64 in Daphne, that nobody knew anything about until the sign went up out there. Well, here we are building capacity for Daphne East because of the residential home growth, and this shows up. And the contention is, is that no, nobody can listen to Mr. Tyler or Mr. Wilson, it's not that they don't want to. The planning commissions were very clear, when they went to Daphne, when they went to the county commission, they said, hey, we're sympathetic, we don't want our schools overcrowded, we don't want portables out there, we don't want our citizens angry, but the law tells us this is what we can consider, and you're not one of the things we can consider. So we said, okay, let's change the law. I mean, Realtors across this county have told us that the number-one question is not how many bedrooms and how many bathrooms, what school district am I in? That's the number-one question they get when they're selling a home. The builders tell us that the number-one reason people enumerate for coming to Baldwin County is not the beautiful mother nature that we have, it's the school system. So I think everybody agrees we need to protect it. In fairness to the mayors and their resolution, they believe that a voluntary effort can solve the problem. If we had had the chance to talk, we would have explained to them ad nauseam the two-year voluntary effort we've already been under and the results it's produced only from one partner in this program. And I think they've left the door open in their resolution to say that they're going to pick up the ball, and they're going to try to implement some changes, and that's what the mayoral resolution called for. So we're in a position to see what they do with the ball in their court, and see where they carry it. I know the delegation is still looking, we tend to have meetings over the summer and revisit this issue, so unless the board decides to change course, we will re-present that bill again, and we will continue to meet and discuss it. As for the city vote bill, I don't know that on a local level we will re-present the vote bill. We do have some cleaning up to do, and we will put that bill back through either in the special or the regular, and we may try to put the vote provision back to it again, but that's not our fight. Our biggest fight was to protect the taxpayers on the Pay As You Go program because Baldwin County was unique, and in our, I guess in our smartness or brilliance, we overlooked the fact that somebody could walk out the back door with a bag full of cash, and we needed to close that door and lock it. We did that, that was the greatest concern. With that, I'm not going to give you a legislative update about all the other things that pass on education, I think you guys have all that, but are there any questions that I can answer about where we are with any of those matters or strategic planning? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. One thing that John Wilson and myself were talking today with Fox 10, very lengthy interview, I mean, he's got enough information for multiple stories, but you as a board, I don't, you see where we're trying to clean up a Foley Elementary School that was the largest in the state of Alabama, and it didn't go K-6. We're rezoning and building another school to try to create two K-6 schools to get them manageable. When we say we've got capacity for 1,200, you know, and then all of a sudden it fills up in a couple of years, I don't think as a board, I know as a superintendent, I don't want a 15 or 1800 school elementary K-6. But, you know, so we're only going to build for so much, and if we can plan, then after we build that 1,200-capacity school, we've already got plans on where we can build that next K-6 or that next middle school. If we, if we're brought to the table for the discussions, I want no authority, all I want is an opportunity to be asked an opinion as a representative of our school board and a school system, because the growth is off the charts. It's just, it is phenomenal, even to sit and do interviews, you start thinking about our growth and what we're dealing with. And I told the reporter today that with our academic success that we've had over these last several years, our other schools are coming into their own. So it's just not like we want to settle into those good schools on the eastern shore. Well, all of our schools are good schools, you know, and we've got one right now that is chasing several of our schools, and I'm sure they're looking at that school in their rearview mirror that, you know, they've got good leadership and they're moving and shaking, and just like Baldwin County High School, the atmosphere there. So as our other schools become better known for their academic endeavors and success, people are going to branch out and say, well, you know, I can live anywhere in Baldwin County and get a great education. And that's what I get excited about. So, you know, we're working as hard as we can work, I don't think we can work any harder to try to do what we're doing. And to Mayor McMillan, he's got me on speed dial, and trust me, he uses that speed dial, because anytime he needs me, he calls me and vice versa. And I consider him as one of those mayors as a good friend to education in Baldwin County, and it's all about kids to him and his council and Spanish Fort as it is to every one of our boards, and hopefully their mayors the same way. So, you know, we've got a lot of great things going on, and the summer, as John said in an email or text, there's no rest for the weary, so I get no sympathy for any of my little plugs, you know, about, you know, let the staff breathe, don't worry about me, you can resuscitate me, but just let the staff breathe a little bit, you know. So that's really the only comments I had to say and make about what we're doing, but anyway, everywhere I go, I sing your praises, because it couldn't be done without you. Bottom line, none of this, none of this could be done if Joy stands up here, or Hope stands up here, or I stand up here, or John stands up here and talks to you about the good things we think need to happen in Baldwin County. If you didn't embrace that, it would not be happening. It would not be happening. So you need to sometimes, when it's tough for you and people are making a run at you and giving you a hard time, just sit down and take a breath and think about the great things that you have endorsed that's been benefiting our educators and our students. So appreciate that.
Any questions or comments? That's almost a kumbaya moment. Because, I mean, wherever we go, we're, I know we're proud of the senior staff, we're proud of this superintendent, and because y'all bring us items that, you know, we're able to ask questions and reach an understanding, and I mean, this is just a, it's a two-way street. Momentum, man, we Baldwin proud. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Amendments to the agenda, amendment number six, leave of absence of personnel. Number seven, retirement and resignation of personnel. Number 10, transfer, intent to transfer personnel. Number 11, employment of personnel. Number 12, extra work for extended periods.
Do I hear a motion? I have a motion, was that Ms. Colley? By Ms. Colley, a second by Ms. Dawson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The agenda is, the amendments to the agenda are passed.
Agenda item one, proposal. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the owner-architect agreement with HM Young and Associates, Inc. for architectural services related to the Orange Beach Elementary HVAC upgrade as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lynch, a second by Mrs. Dawson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item two, purchase of Lenovo 300C Chromebooks. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the purchase of Lenovo 300C Chromebooks to replace all high, middle, and elementary schools Lenovo N21 and N22s for the academic school year 2019-20 in accordance with Alabama Purchasing Program for a total cost of $8,903,337.50, which includes the Lenovo 300C, three-year warranty, three-year on-site warranty, three-year accidental damage protection plan, ADP insurance, installation fees, and Google license as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a motion by Mrs. Colley, a second by Mrs. Dawson, any discussion?
One quick question. Is this something that we do every three years? Is this, how this is set up? The last time it was presented, I said it in the presentation in the board on June, matter of fact, I predicted June of 2019, I believe, roughly of $900,000. It is a three-year period, and that includes basically, you know, everything from those schools. And timing for that, it couldn't have been better. And I'll explain, let John explain, a lot of timing and plumbing couldn't be better. So, you know, I've been working with the board, we knew this was going to arrive in a number of years. Fortunately, and it is weird that I'm saying that, we got a good amount of funding from the state of Alabama, and that's what it is this year, advancement in technology, and that's $8.3 million that comes from Baldwin County this summer. And so tremendous amount of money, couldn't be better timing, and I'm able to, my plan is to shift some of the funds that we did have allocated for the Chromebooks and move it to construction, and we can kind of keep the ball rolling on our construction projects and things like that. You have to pay yourself the Chromebooks that are at the end of their life, and so at the end of the day, hopefully, there could be no additional costs to taxpayers other than what the Biden.
And I think to go further with Mr. Johnson's question, probably, when there's a refresh three years from now, we'll be looking at a cost again, yes, sir.
They only offer three-year warranties, so you know, they don't warranty that.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item three, amendment to Spanish Fort Special Tax District 7. Agenda item three, amendment to Spanish Ford Special Tax District 7. The superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the resolution for amendment of special tax district 7 as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a very weak motion by Mrs. Colley. Would you speak up just a little?
I was waiting for somebody else to come in later.
Well, let me give you one more chance.
I want to leave the motion in here.
Well, that's okay. Well, speak up where our old man can hear you. I have a, I have, I have a motion by Mrs. Colley and a second by Mrs. Lynch. Any discussion? All?
Is that the original map? Is that the first map? You know, we had two drawings of two different maps.
No, it's on, it's, uh, it's a new map.
It's a new map of the, of the rezoning, redistricting.
This takes into consideration the changes that you've made to the attendance map. So it moves, moves the south line of Spanish Ford up to the interstate. It used to dip down. It used to go along. There's some minor modifications on the north side that took catch the parcels. And on, essentially on Bromley Road were kids at 10 schools in, in Spanish Ford, but the parcel wasn't technically in the tax district. So, so this line captures those kids on the Bromley Road side and then cuts out everything south of I-10.
So essentially, does it go behind Ace always to the interstate? Does it go behind where?
Ace Hardware on 59.
Ace Storage Facility on 59. Does it go down to Loxley? See, I was looking at the, I was looking at the maps.
No, it doesn't go, it doesn't go to Loxley.
It looked like it crossed 59 and went into, I mean, uh, State.
It follows the Spanish Ford feeder pattern and we don't go that far?
Well, what is the little blue line that goes all the way around on, on the map?
Is this one of them?
See, it shows it on the next page, the map.
At that page, you're talking about right down there. Here.
Yeah. Yeah. Doesn't that cross 59? Where, right here?
That's, it goes.
Isn't that where?
No, that's, that's 31. That curve is 31.
Yeah.
That's 31.
Well, where's 59?
59 is back over here.
I got it.
Tony, Tony saw it on the map too, yeah.
In corporate Stonebridge, which is where the Stonebridge Elementary was.
I, I know where.
Yeah, 31 now, yeah.
So that's 31?
Yes.
Yes.
You good? Any other questions?
What's that other blue there? Is that just the coloring of, of, it, it doesn't signify anything, does it? Below where the, the marking is for the tax district?
Just the color blue?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
But that, that's the bay.
That's the bay. I have, but what is right here, the map we had before in the tax district, it went all the way down to 10, the one I saw last time.
You're talking about that blue right there, right?
It does.
Yeah, you're just, you may just have, it's, it's kind of, you may have to look at it. The south is right there.
That's what?
There's 10 right there. So it starts at 10.
It comes all the way down to Loxley. If it comes to I-10, it comes to Loxley.
It comes to I-10 in the Malbus.
Part of Loxley.
There is a small portion of, of the Loxley municipal limits that are in this tax district.
Because they go to Spanish Ford schools.
We didn't, we didn't make any change. That, that's, that line has always been there. So, so the only changes we made from the existing tax district was to move the south line up to I-10.
Yeah.
And then it captures a handful of parcels along Bromley Road. We didn't change anything on the, on the west.
East, east side.
Like towards, moving towards Loxley.
Right.
Or Baymanette or State of Texas, all that states.
I was just trying to figure out how far down I-10 the line comes.
Going east?
Yes, going, going east from the shopping center.
Do you want us to pull it up?
Can we put it on the big, yeah, say it's, because I think we're all looking at different maps.
And I think like maybe.
Because I'm looking at a different.
And there, and we have two different maps.
It's just like.
Yeah, but why is mine not turned?
Because this is in the next.
I was pulling it up, let's say this, the map was remade as the attendance zone.
Right.
So the attendance zone for Spanish Ford High School is the map for the tax district.
But see, yours is so much bigger than mine.
This has been built to mirror that. So wherever the attendance line on I-10 falls to the east is where the tax district line will fall. They have to mirror each other. We can't deviate from that. We'll pull it up. I, I don't remember exactly where, but it does deviate back north. Somewhere along that eastern boundary, we're going to pull it up. I don't know exactly where.
So this is 10, right? Yes. That this little bar. No, that's 10. Yeah, that's, that's right. That's what I was thinking. So this is 10. This little, this one down here, see? That's 10. Right. Questions?
You're talking about this one here?
Yes.
That's 10.
Yeah. And it, and it's not an issue. It's just.
He's got a nice copy. Oh, I know.
The same lines.
I don't like it. Oh, no.
That's what it's all about right there, honestly.
Look at those smiles.
Little judge.
Yes.
One of the right, I look like little judge earlier.
All right. It's kind of like a hundred and fifty. We moved it up. We moved the line to capture. It's almost.
Well, feeder pattern map off of my cross.
Green.
Feeder pattern map will give a whole lot of.
Pink. What, what is here?
This is, this is south of 10, pink here, so that's, that's it.
So pink is Spanish Ford. It's real high.
No, pink is south of, south of the interstate, so that would be.
That would be where.
Can you get feeder pattern map up real quick?
So the green is there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Spanish Ford.
I think it's on 10.
This is the feeder pattern map.
What happened to the map you just had up there?
This is the feeder pattern map which represents Spanish.
Wait a minute, I'm about to get Tony to tell you.
But it's a big.
Oh, okay, green, that's there. Oh, the pink is Spanish Ford.
Okay, so Mr. Myrick, if you can look here, the pink would be what you saw as blue. This gives you a better idea of that boundary. That boundary was not changed on this map. This is the feeder pattern map for Spanish Ford High School. If you see there, it's the same, but the page cuts off the eastern boundary of that tax district line. If you see the.
That's John.
There you go. On the pink right here where it merges, I, I would say somewhere around Cameron, the back end of Cameron, looks like where it stopped.
We got, we got.
I can't really give you a delineation.
I'd say I. So the new, the Stonebridge subdivision is coming in right here?
Yes.
So that's considered the Loxley City Limits. That's the only little piece that is in Loxley. None of this changes. The only thing that changed on this new map is this comes up.
Yeah, this came out of Spanish Ford. This is not on that tax map you're looking at. And right here in this area of Bromley Road.
That's the existing feeder pattern. We're just saying it didn't change on that side.
The reason is, because the way that the board policy applies to this according to bill is if your house lays on the dividing line.
Right.
Then you go to the feeder pattern.
Right.
But to collect the taxes for those students, we had to actually pull in the parcels. So we moved this boundary line up just to the back end of these parcels along Bromley Road because these students attend Spanish Ford. Those are the only two changes I would attest to you today that have been made to that map.
And it matches.
Yes.
You can see that, that matches.
But to your question, this eastern boundary, the reason I pulled the map up is because the page cuts off right there, so you can't see what's on the other side of it.
Yeah.
And your question was what's on the other side of it? So if, when John flips to the other map, you can see that's what would be on the other side of it right there. I don't know if that helps, but it is the same.
Well, it does because right there where I-10 is at 59.
Yes, sir.
That's where Foley had, I mean, uh, Loxley has, there's stations and whatnot.
Yes, sir.
Uh, behind it on 49, they had, it runs all the way back up in here, they have their industrial park. And behind Ace in here, you know, I thought that Loxley had come up in here with their jurisdiction.
They have picked up thi- this all right here on the back of this road, this is what Ms. Colley was talking about. This is the neighborhood that is owned by Truland Homes and it comes all the way down here. Doesn't pick up Ace, but it's about 1,500, 2,000 acres up here in this area.
Right.
They annexed all of that into Loxley. A portion of it was in the Spanish Ford feeder pattern. As you can see, a portion of it divides three feeder patterns. Because it literally lays right here in this, this is the triangle, of course, but it lays right in there. So we are currently dividing that. The reason it hasn't been adjusted is because this dividing line is built along some kind of watershed, maybe a creek.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Cox, who owns Truland, has not yet decided whether he wants to bridge that creek yet to develop the eastern side of his property. So he has had no interest in rezoning that area because they're not developing it. And the other thing is we just, we didn't want to open Pandora's box.
Where, where in there did he designate some land for a middle school or whatever, I mean, an elementary?
Am I missing you up? I don't want to be confused. This is the one we're doing. That's.
Go back to the other. It is right. Go back to the other one.
Where much Stonebridge?
That's right.
Or can you zoom in on it? It's over here.
Yeah, I'll zoom in on it.
This is the Stonebridge neighborhood over here that's being built out now. But the new high school that we have apparently, I mean, the new school we've announced tonight on live television.
Elementary school is kind of right in this.
Surprise.
And it's going to be another elementary school.
K-6, yes, sir.
That will go to Spanish Ford.
Spanish Ford High School.
It takes pressure off of Rockwell.
This one, this one right here is where he's donated, uh, three acres.
Thirty acres. It may take, it may take pressure off of Rockwell, it's not taking it off the middle school or the high school.
Well, it will because. That's what doing this did. We took out 600 kids down here. And, and the middle school has three grades in it. And so if we make this a K-6, we have the sixth grade of Rockwell and Spanish Ford Elementary making, bringing back the middle school to only 7 and 8.
How far is?
They're central Baldwin.
How, how far is Spanish Ford?
No, Spanish Ford, I'm sorry.
Sorry, who? Oh, Spanish Ford Middle, uh, took 2021.
The high school.
Their way is one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the 24.
Marty's, Spanish Ford High School, they've got a ways to go to get to 7, 8, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they've got a ways to go.
Yeah.
And, and then the, the new wing will give them, I think roughly around 1,600 to 1,700 capacity at the high school. You're a little bit ahead of schedule, but you're thinking along the track we are. When Stonebridge comes in over here, the next, we, we, the first step to fixing Spanish Ford's problem was to get I-10 to the dividing line. That gave us capacity at the middle school and capacity at Rockwell. The middle school drops sixth grade, they will become a true 7, 8 middle school like our elementary schools. Then when we get Stonebridge built in 2021, we will be able to do renovations to Spanish Ford Elementary. In 2022, it is our goal, and again, this is not anywhere close to coming to y'all yet. I mean, Mr. Tyler hadn't even signed on with this. This is just a strategic planning team, is that what you're looking at is you would have a K-6 at Spanish Ford Elementary, you would have a K-6 at Rockwell and a K-6 at Stonebridge, a true 7, 8 at the middle school and then the high school, and we would be what we hope is completely built out for the next decade in Spanish Ford. But because of the rapid growth, it's taking us several steps to get there. We could, this is not something we could just go build one school and fix it because it impacts, as Mr. Myrick pointed out, the high school, the middle school and several elementary schools. Also in Spanish Ford Elementary, you're landlocked with those buildings. If we went in and started doing construction now, we would have no bus drop off, no parking. So we, we've got a really good trend to bring forward. This is, I guess, a good foreshadowing, but that's kind of what's being looked at. And it's relative to what's being done. I think that's a good question. Mr. Myrick, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
I helped him.
I just don't see where, you know, Loxley is one of the fastest growing areas and it's going to be because they have that I-10 and they're giving up, they're giving up a good bit of that, that stretch through there. Oh.
Here's the, here's the good news. If that changes in the future and for some reason, let's say Stonebridge no longer attends Spanish Ford High School, but let's say a decade or two from now, there's a new Loxley High School or something in that area predominates some growth, then if we change the tax district, that's fine. We can amend the tax district. The money still has to follow those schools within the area. One of the benefits and one of the reasons, if you remember, Fairhook voted in a 30-year tax grant. Spanish Ford's is 10 years. There's a reason for that and part of that reason is what you're talking about, this I-10, 59 corridor growth area is a little bit unstable. But Mayor McMillan also understands that his 31, 181 corridor is in rapid flux right now. He's looking at taking Jimmy Faulkner and Bromley, they've already acquired a tremendous amount of land up towards Baymanette. And Spanish Ford had actually asked us to go ahead and build that into the process. Problem is we don't have the capacity for it. And as everybody here knows, if you green light anything else for Spanish Ford, they're coming. And I'm pointing the wrong area. This is up here where I was talking about. City of Spanish Ford has already annexed in, am I in the right general area up here? They've already annexed in a lot of this area and they had requested that we bring that area in, but then nobody lives in it. So it has no impact right now.
Well, nobody lives in that area right over in there either.
Correct, absolutely.
But I would have, I would have thought it would have made a little more sense to gone up there and, and took in a little more in that area than right in there.
Well, we didn't take any.
Yeah, this was the existing enrollment area. It followed the little river area.
This was built when Spanish Ford High School was created and has not been. This was the exact same border line that it was when you guys created Spanish Ford High School. It has not been altered. And that's what we didn't want to do is we didn't want to alter the district to impact any attendance zones until we got down the road. But that's also why there's a 10-year limit on this tax. Because we do believe that this is going to change and we believe this is going to change in that 10-year period will come back and revise it. There's no perfection. It's, we're getting, we're getting as close as we can get.
I would, I would.
This is the old map?[1640.21]
This is the old map.
No, 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 this is the new map.
This is the new map?
This is the new approval, yes.
I'm sorry, remind me, the pink, what is this?
That's, that's the Loxley, that's, that's down in, well.
Well, let me say this, in this map, it would represent everything other than Spanish Fort. So you only have two colors, green for Spanish Fort and pink for everything else.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's not a division between.
Baymanett, uh, Baymanett area, Robertsdale area.
So a lot of this would be going to Daffy and then rezoning, I think that's, uh, San Tashville area right there.
Yes, okay, okay, yes, 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 yes.
All right, we got a motion, a second.
What, what I would say to, to Mr. Myrick's point, I, I, I agree, Mr. Mike, Loxley is rapidly, has just now taken off and started to, uh, see some growth. We actually had a conversation at lunch today, John and myself and John, about the next four years. And in that conversation was places like Silver Hill Elementary, places like Loxley Elementary, uh, those kind of things about what we need to do there to those schools. So, uh.
I'll address two points from Spanish Fort that are different than Fairhope. And, and when we first initiated this, one of the things that I presented to the board when we discussed this from a strategic level was that every city would be the same.
John, Mike can't hear you, are you?
It's okay. One of the things when we presented this to the board was that every city would be the same. We didn't want to have this element where we went to one city and negotiated an agreement that was vastly different than another city, that everybody would agree to the same agreement. Because the board is not subrogating its responsibility. You are still responsible for the allocation of these funds. But the process by which it comes to you is being amended because we're now incorporating a local group that will have local input and local control on what happens within their area. This gives them buy-in and it's something that we hope will help alleviate some of the city school concerns that they don't have any say-so or input. So this will help them from the ground up. To that point, Spanish Fort recommended something that they wanted to do particular to their area. Uh, and that is, they do not want athletics funded out of this money. They have had a history within their community where that became a divisive issue about weather, and I don't know the history terribly well, but something about AstroTurf and they're not unusual of other cities, other cities go through the same process. But what they wanted to do is they didn't want to fight some of those battles and they wanted this to be about academics, they wanted it to be about classrooms. So what we did allow, and it is for every city, is in the constitutional amendment that goes before the voters, there are three things that have to be filled in. The first one is the purpose, the second one is the rate, and the third is the district. You've already seen the district, the rate we've addressed, which is ten years. The third thing is the purpose. The purpose is completely up to whoever wants to write it. We have welcomed the cities to put their fingerprints on it. And in this case, I don't have the specific language in front of me, but I think it says something about academic enhancement and life skills. Does anybody have that in front of them?
Academic enhancement, life skills program.
Yeah, academic enhancements and life skills programs, I was pretty close, not having it. Um, those are the two things it can be spent on. The reason I'm bringing that up is because I had the delightful opportunity to enjoy breakfast with Mr. Lou Campanosi and Kevin Spriggs twice this week. Hi, guys. And in that meeting, they pointed out that Spanish Fort had backed up on its commitment to not allow athletics. So I wanted to be clearly stated to the board and clearly stated to the public and to anyone who wants to look up the document, that is in fact not true. The only thing this money can be spent on is academic enhancements and life skill improvements, that's it. It cannot be spent on anything else. The reason that, that it was taken out of the second document is because, and you guys understand this in the law, in the law, you have a hierarchy of implementation. Constitutional amendments are the highest, laws from our legislature are second, then we get local laws and then we have board policies. Then even beneath all that, we have contracts and that's what we have with the city as a contract. So to protect the city leadership and what they wanted to do, we recommended that they put this at the constitutional amendment level, meaning it can never be changed. Because if they had simply agreed with the board that, hey, handshake, we're not gonna spend it on athletics, wink, wink, nod, nod, a new board and a new city could have amended that three or four years from now and that wouldn't have been the purpose they wanted to put forward. I, I don't, I, I hate to go on so long about that and I apologize for the time, but, but because it has already come up, because the city of Spanish Fort tried very hard, I want to be crystal clear, athletics are not allowed in this bill. And it is prohibited at the constitutional level by the vote of the people in what they're authorizing the funds to be spent for. And that was the second thing I want to make sure you knew because I did say that every city would adopt the same document. And Spanish Fort did adhere to that. We did make some few adjustments that their council found that we all agreed were probably better and will become part of our future document going forward. But there are three things everybody can change, the rate, the map and the purpose. And that's what Spanish Fort changed.
John, to John.
Yes, sir.
One more question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that tax you said roughly gonna generate eight hundred thousand dollars there about.
Mr. Wilson.
About, about, roughly.
Okay.
Could be overrated, whatever. All right, that money's gonna be spent on academics. All right, now the eight hundred thousand that they would normally get, if you take that money instead of it, then that's money coming from the county board. So they could actually do whatever they want to with that if they made their recommendation to us, right?
Okay. What you have just described is supplanting and we've, we've contractually agreed that does not happen. Now, that's not the way you were describ-
That's a handshake.
That's not the way you were describing it, but that's how some people would infer it. So what the document says is, is that the money that they are raising locally cannot be used to replace or fund things with which they are already being funded by the county. So this is not a replacement to county funds. The other thing is, they can't take the eight hundred and then take the other money and do something with it because the board is appropriating all the money, you're directing the money. So you're not going to direct eight hundred thousand to go to athletics when they can turn around and take the other money. You budget everything for this county, you will budget that eight hundred, you will budget your regular eight hundred. But also remember this, we have very, very little discretionary money in our county budget. Our money comes from devisers and allocations and teacher units. We have very little money that's discretionary. So I don't even think within the Spanish Fort feeder pattern that we arguably would have eight hundred thousand dollars in discretionary funds that aren't attributable to a teacher unit or to a divisor. So what you're describing is, no, I don't, I'm not saying somebody couldn't figure it out at some point in the future if that was their intention, but to the degree that we've analyzed it, we don't see a way that somebody could take eight hundred and move it into Block A, move Block C into B and then shift money around as you're describing, we don't believe that can be done.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I would say if it's this board or.
Yes, sir.
Whoever in the future, but you come in there and you say, okay, we want to add on to the stadium, we want to do this, it's gonna cost two hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know, we, we generate this money for academics and why can't we get two hundred fifty thousand dollars? Then that's where you have a major falling out.
My, and my response would be, we would be more than happy for you to do it, take it back to the voters and have them amend it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we've got the question on the floor.
Good question.
It was a great question.
Well, before you leave, I just want to say I applaud Spanish Fort for saying that this money will go to those things and eh, good job.
My, my, well, uh, to that, Ms. Norm, and I know Tony, Tony made some good points. Spanish Fort, city of Spanish Fort already gives, does a lot for their schools out of their city budget, you know? I think with this, if they pass this millage, it will, they will continue to be able to take what they normally do, uh, to uplift their schools with their local funds that they're generating through taxes and revenues and continue to support the schools in a manner, when they might come to you one day and say, look, we need an expansion on the stadium, it's gonna cost like Mr. Myrick said, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, but those are monies that you have accumulated through your local dollars, it has nothing to do with the three-mill tax. So I think it's a, it's a win-win, if I'm saying that right, Mike.
What you are, after you are, you know, fighting about, you know, we budgeted this year three quarters million dollars, but you're all still having it. There's still gonna be city funds to do things, to enhance other programs. This just allows us to collect three mills and take care of our academics and our art.
Alex, any things wrong with that? I just, I just don't want the board, whoever the board is, to be sitting up and be like, like crapshoot out of. You know, if they don't get what, if whoever the committee is, whatever they want. And they say, well, you know, we really wasn't intended for that, then you got a conflict there between the board and, and whoever wants to make a recommendation. And those people, you know, always thinking how to get the upper hand on something.
Well, the beauty, the beauty about that, and David might be, might gonna say what I'm gonna say, but if the committee can't agree on how the money needs to be spent, the money just stays there and it just rolls over, you know?
What, what I was gonna say is, that conflict exists for you to that.
Yes.
I mean, people probably all the time asking y'all to spend money on things and can't consider it. Uh, city of Spanish Fort has made sure that, that they have adequate athletic facilities out there to run the program. They've also built parks and the citizens that vote us, they want enhancement on academics. Citizens, city council, they won't see more money spent on academics at this point in time. So John's exactly right, the best, the best way that we can seek to lock it down is to include that in the constitutional amendment, something that the vote in the election, subject to the amendment, so that cannot be changed except by voter being. Uh, and so I, I, I think that, I think that while that is a concern, that's a concern exists with this company, not, it's just there. As it relates to the other funds, it's part of the joint agreement, what the board is committed to do is to not reduce the normal funding that the state is paying for.
Right, right.
Based on the existence of this money.
Correct.
So that is true enhancement money and it's not replacing any funding, grossing the costs of that being.
Yeah, I see exactly what you're talking about, but everyone else is not doing the three mills either. So they, if they generate any extra money, then that committee won't, they, what they won't done, you know, and, and, uh, take, take my district, we, we're not gonna do the three, uh, mill probably in tax, I'm sure. Uh, but if it's passed in Spanish Fort and it's passed in Fairhope, that's two, that's two districts right there that are gonna have more money to do something with. You, you see what I'm saying? But we don't have that problem right now. We just have a problem of trying to be, et cetera, and fair.
Tony, I, I think, and I think it goes back to the conversation we had briefly at Spanish Fort Elementary when we talked about Fairhope's, um, tax agreement. You know, when the cities come to us and want to provide more, want to be able to do more for their schools, how are we in a position to tell them no? And, and I think.
Who said they gonna tell them no? I'm just saying, if you're gonna have some, a committee that's gonna ask the board to do what they won't done and then you're putting the board in a position to agree with them, if not, then you're gonna have a disagreement. And that's all I'm saying, I mean, I mean, then, then you get into this disagreement.
The committee can't request, I see your point now. The committee can't request, they're prohibited from requesting it because it can't even be considered. It, it, that, that's, that's the point. See, at the constitutional level, the only thing the local committee can even recommend that be spent on is academic enhancement, life skill improvements, that's it. They can't even recommend that you athletic facilities. I mean, I might say.
Well, I ain't talking about athletics, I don't matter.
Anything, outside of that, they couldn't recommend on anything except those two things. I'm not saying somebody couldn't break the rules and, and do it anyway, but I would think you just return it to them and say, I'm sorry, we can't consider that, it's not a, it can't be.
Right, right.
But to your point earlier about Robertsdale doesn't have one, let, let me tell you that it is, it is the hope and dream of those of us who came up with this, that we create an incentive and desire by others, by, by those who are most willing to do this, leading the way, that eventually encourages others to step up and help their schools.
I didn't mean that Robertsdale would never do. I meant, I have not heard it being on the table for that, but, you know, I mean, anything can change.
Understand.
They are trying to claim that.
They are trolling.
He probably won't call me or you.
All right, are we all clear?
Yes.
Everybody okay?
What exactly is life skills enhancement, what does that term?
We tried to cover both tech education and some of the things that are not always considered academic and that was our definition with the help of some of the educational experts in the community.
Like, would the arts be considered?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With all that being said, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of, of amendment to Spanish Fort Special Dash Tax District Seven, that's Agenda Item Number Three, would you say?
I was gonna say, what's your agenda?
Yeah, we're on number three. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I'm only saying.
Motion carries.
The map, I don't care how much you could put a ten, ten mill on there, but the map is coming too close to Loxley for me. Just my opinion.
Ready to go.
Agenda Item Four, Three Mill Special Tax District Request from the City of Spanish Fort. Uh, Superintendent, this is, this is, remember, Agenda Item Four, right?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Superintendent recommends adoption of motion to approve the resolution to authorize the filing with the Bowen County Commission of a request for a special tax district seven election and to authorize and direct superintendent and staff to take all necessary actions and furtherance thereof as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lynch and a second by Mrs. Colly. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Five, Approval of Contracts, Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Funds. The superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the contracts to be paid from Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Grant Funds as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dawson, a second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion?
Tell me, I was just wondering when I saw it, uh, we worry about the bullying in schools, but we teach them karate.
Oh, really? Oh, oh, okay, so we teach them to fight back now. Why about that, fool? Oh, I know.
Any other discussion?
I, I just throw it out there every month that this is incredible money doing incredible things, but anytime politically you can put it out there that it's a good thing and it doesn't need to go away, do it. Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Six, Leave of Abstinence of Personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the leave of absence of personnel as amended and provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by, I think, Ms. Dawson.
Sure, sure.
Sure, Ms. Dawson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Seven, Retirement and Resignation of Personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the retirement and resignations of personnel as amended and provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mrs. Colly, a second by Mrs. Lynch, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Eight, Termination of Temporary and/or Probationary Classified Personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the termination of classified personnel in accordance with Act Number Twenty Eleven Dash Two Seventy. Students' First Act is provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Ms. Colly, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Nine, Suspension of Personnel Unpaid. The superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the unpaid suspension of personnel as provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mrs. Colly, a second by Mrs. Dawson, any discussion?
Can we really discuss this, ask any questions about it without being in executive session?
Not in the possession.
Huh?
Not in the possession.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Nine, excuse me, Agenda Item Ten, Transfer Intent to Transfer Personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the transfer intent to transfer personnel as amended and provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Mrs. Dawson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Eleven, Employment of Personnel. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the employment of personnel as amended and provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mrs. Lynch, a second by Mrs. Colly, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Twelve, Extra Work for Extended Periods. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the extra work of personnel for extended periods as amended and provided to board members under separate cover.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Mrs. Dawson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda Item Thirteen, Twenty Nineteen, Twenty Twenty Salary Schedules. Superintendent recommends adoption of a motion to approve the dissemination of proposed Twenty Nineteen, Twenty Twenty Salary Schedules to local schools and organizations for input as stipulated in the agenda exhibit.
I have a motion by Mrs. Dawson, a second by Mrs. Lynch, any questions? Any discussion?
I, I just want to say thank you for getting in our arts and adding those supplements for chorus and drama. And I think research shows us that those activities for students are as important as our athletics and we should honor them as such. So as those programs grow and they're doing more after school and putting on more productions and being out there in the community. I'll be after, I'll, I'll be after you to raise them, so there you go.
So you're giving a, 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 to, uh, the chorus teacher?
Um, at the high school level, it will be the drama teacher and the chorus teacher, and at the middle school level.
Well, they have a lot of dramas teachers.
Oh.
Uh, but it, does all high schools offer chorus?
I don't think so, I don't think that all of them are offering chorus, I can give you a number on the high schools that do have it. It's like every time.
I mean, they, they can not have it if they don't want to have it?
It's elective, it's elective, yeah.
But I think basically a principal will have a certain number of a lot of teachers, I think we talked about, those who are all, they have a heart to the church. They're based on each of those units that they have, they're based on student interest in certain program.
It might add in the first year, the, the awards they want, you know, which might go a little bit, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe they summon in Robertsdale that can sing.
Yeah, they should.
They used to, they used to have one, of course.
There would obviously be, you know, some cultural interest and, you know, and, and the principal would need to throw that out there. And, and, yeah, um, kind of, feel the chorus program, um, and it's certainly feasible, um, they just have to be a lot of teaching events to do it.
Yeah, I think they may not have a unit.
At, um, if I can, just briefly, because I think this is a good place to throw this in. Um, I, in a discussion with someone the other day, I mentioned this and, and hope I wanted to bring it to your, not to your attention, I know that you know it, but to ask you, if this is something that we're doing in, in working with our principals, is certainly training new principals, assistant principals, in order to be more flexible, what kind of communication are we giving to colleges and universities and other higher learning institutions about the fact that regardless of whether, um, a graduate of their program has to identify a minor? the fact that regardless of whether a graduate of their program has to identify a minor, if it is at least, if they learn to achieve a certain number of hours that satisfies the state as far as a minor is concerned, we can get our teacher units to go a lot further. If you have somebody who has a major but has a minor, where they could teach one hour a day or one class a day or two a year if it's a high school, that's much more flexible for a principal to do something in their schedule where they lack units, as if they could focus on getting a unit that has a double ability.
Well, they said that, that, you know, that they offered the teachers the option to take the praxis, and they, and, you know, that, and that was, they said that would do the same thing as a minor, you know, then they, that would, but I mean, I don't know what they wanted to do, if that was going to be an option for them.
But if we have new people...
Right, there are some things like that, where a teacher who's been teaching for two years in a certain subject area can add a certification, we have a lot of teachers who are doing certifications and stuff like that. Some of what you're talking about probably is going to have to occur at state level first and then be pushed down to the, you know, higher end, because, you know, the state, we still have to produce an outfield. So we have to identify those subject personnel codes that are, you know, able to tie by some type of certification, and if they don't fit into that criteria, we have to save, we start at that field to the state, and then we have to, you know, take steps to correct that. So I think we have to originate, originate at the state level, and then, you know, kind of be pushed down from the less experienced to the higher end, but there are some creative things that, you know, that some universities like UAD for example, if you are a biology major, they encourage some of their, you know, some of those areas to also get certification, you know, teacher certification, like they have to take just a few classes, and so they'll be a biology major, and that way, if medical school doesn't work out, they'll have teacher certification, you know, to teach science or biology. And we've gotten some really neat applicants from UAD, from Wisconsin, and pretty good teachers. They're the only college that I'm aware of, that, you know, that we travel to that has a program like that to try to generate some additional, you know, teacher candidates.
Well, the more and more we face, the more and more that we face trying to find teachers to fill those hard-to-find, you know, certifications, math, science, then the more flexible that we can be, the better quality of teacher we're going to be and the more flexible we are. I mean, we pay locally funded units, and we want to pay locally funded units because we want to keep them, you know, to keep student classroom numbers where they're supposed to be, but I'm well aware of the fact that there can come a day when you can't fund every locally funded teacher, and suddenly those people have to disappear. And the more flexible we can be to keep those numbers down, the safer we are in protecting not only our teachers, I think, but also ourselves. And I don't know where that conversation should start, you know, but...
We ready to vote?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, my wheels are turning.
Yeah. Association should start that conversation, I'm sorry.
That's good.
Jennifer, do you have something you want to?
I just want to mention something about powers of influence, if you have any questions about it, I would rather answer it, but, the, if you have someone ask in your area, if they look at this salary and say, well, this test is 70% exempt, that's because of this document to get it on your table to disseminate, I mean, we have a choice to either, you know, add a 4% to this document, or we can get teachers on the board agenda for, you know, to be on the teach. So here is, the first item says that a 4% will be applied, so the copy that you have created will have a 4% on it, and part of what you're, you know, that change is going to be part of what's proven, you know, so just in case somebody looked at it and you mentioned it to you, the area can see a 4% and it will be there.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up before the board tonight? Rousing, really good discussion. You never know about my colleague and good friend from Robertsdale, he either won't say anything or he talks a lot, I appreciate you. I appreciate you.
They got some questions, I want to know.
I like it, I like, that's one of, that's this family thing, we're all...
They passed that, that extra money for the K4 program, we get any of that? Do we get any extra classes?
You have to go through a long application process, officer...
Well, why don't those Einsteins in Montgomery say you can only get that money through Apple, through grain?
Matching funds and...
Yes, instead of saying that we put 200 and something million dollars in there extra, and they sound good, but everything is...
No, no.
Especially in Montgomery.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, let's adjourn.
Go ahead, what, no?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think the point, I think the point that Tony raises is important.
It is.
That's a message that we need to get out, that people don't understand that, that people don't understand that, and that's a message we need to get out.
In a lot of systems like ours that are large that have pre-K, a lot of times, they don't get quite the attention for some of those pre-K applications that other smaller systems and rural areas are getting.
Yeah, but some of the poorer systems are getting that mandatory correct funding on K4, and, and we're not...
Boy, they, I looked at the state level, Lamb, Willcock, Green, they, their numbers in K4 are staggering.
I'm sure.
Birmingham City?
Well, you been in Birmingham, they need to be in it.
It should be operated completely differently. A bureaucratic agency, it should follow the foundation program. If we want K4...
I have a motion.
Well, I was going to, I was just going to point out one thing, guys.
Thought it did.
Well, no, and I want to make sure...
I don't want to cut anybody off.
All of our board members are aware, we do have a new camera system.
Yeah, there'll be a referendum in March, I believe.
They're not listening.
Y'all need to hear this.
John, on the State School Board, Tony was just commenting on that, isn't there going to be a referendum in March?
Yes, they're going to be.
By the vote of the public?
They're gone.
Okay.
If, if you put any elected office up for a vote in Alabama to dissolve it, it would be gone.
But the thing is, is the public's going to stay on whether to keep the state board or not.
Question is to dissolve the state board, which means you go to an appointed system of the governor, it passed, it's on the ballot in March in the presidential primary. So whether you vote Democrat or Republican, you will have the option to vote.
But is that one of the bills you, y'all were pushing?
I was not. I mean, I don't really have a preference on the way Dr. Maggie treated us.
You were, yeah, but, yeah, but, who, who picked Dr. Maggie?
We are going to refrain from comment.
Who picked Dr. Maggie?
Hey, uh, take the governor, Dean. All right. I'm going, I'm going to call, hey.
I'm going to talk 45 minutes into the beginning right now, here in the back of the room,